To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most time, gracious Father, we give you the honor and the glory which is so deserving. We thank you, Father, for this time which has been set aside, that we, as leaders of the community, can come together and to express our concerns on matters which are before us. We pray, Father, that anything that's done, any decisions that's made, will not be contrary to your will. We thank you for the help and the strength and the wisdom that allows us, that allows us to be here in this position. We pray, Father, for our community. We just thank you, Father, as you look about us and we see the beauty, that's the glory of your handiwork is all about us, evidence that there is a God. We ask that you be with us, give us a good mindset on the decisions we're about to make, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay, commissioners, filing any orders?
Yes. We'll call the minutes on that. Mister Marshall, why he is the president, move on.
All right, with that, we will move to the approval of last week's meeting for this. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes, I'm going to motion to accept it.
Okay, can I have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, you've got a second. Rondell, all of us in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Okay, first on our agenda, we have Chief Public Defender Ryan Bauer. Would you like to come forward, Mr. Bauer?
Thanks for having me again. It's a good morning. I get up here. I am here, first of all, regarding the system navigator position. As you know, we received the grant funding, or can receive the grant funding. The contract is for two years. The way it's written is it's only two years. It's 20, the remainder of this year and then 2024. And again, the system navigator will be a person that will help us with the Department of Children and Family. They have a number of services. They have a number of third-party service providers. And this will be a person, hopefully, that's an expert in these things and will help our clients navigate towards the process as it goes on over the course of a year, two years at these DCS cases. One of the things that we're doing that's a little bit different or a little bit newer than just the DCS is we're also having them help us with the juvenile cases. Those are minor children that are charged, not charged technically, but accused of shoplifting or truancy, you know, not showing up to school, things like that. And they have a separate program with a lot of third-party providers. I was trying to think of a word for psychologists and programs that they use. And so, we think that this system navigator, because we're a smaller county, can do both things. So, we're excited. There is no determination on what happens in 2025. You know, we spent a little bit of time trying to argue for a three-year, fully 100% reimbursed system navigator. That's not something I think the commission, the Public Defender Commission, was really willing to do. So, it is just from '23 to '24. Anytime that we hire anybody, we're going to let them know that it's two years. That's all we can promise. We have no idea what's going to happen in the future. During that time, I think Indianapolis and us want to sort of see if this is effective. If it's not, or only partially effective, I don't think we'll move much forward to it. I hope it will be and think it will be. And we're going to keep them closely supervised, because even if we don't have a system navigator in 2025, I want to take all that knowledge with me. So, I want to make sure that we know all the service providers intricately. I want to make sure that we know all these programs that they use and what they prefer. And even if we don't have that, I think we can maybe offload some of that work on our back, on our attorneys, unfortunately, and some of the staff. So, it is fully 100% reimbursed, but it is only that two years. That's all I can promise for anybody that we hire. That's all I can promise for you. I don't know what will happen after that. So, still think it's a good program. I want to think it's worth it.
Also, they'll reimburse the, is that, most of it, we have to pay insurance and per?
They'll reimburse every?
They reimburse 100% of everything?
100% of everything, up to for 2023, $70,800. So, the top salary would be $42,500. My hope is that we will post it around $40,000 and hopefully we can find somebody. I wanted a licensed clinical social worker. I think probably that's going to be too low for around here to get a fully licensed clinical social worker. But I think we can get maybe somebody formally that has worked with DCS at that price range. I think we're okay there. And we've tried to implement everything or tried to fold in everything. We thought educational programs that they'll have to go through, their mileage for back and forth around different homes and to travel to different service providers, all those things, laptops, printers desks, we all included that. Hopefully, we can find those at cheaper cost than we asked for in the budget. But it'll be 100% reimbursable upon every quarter. So, we'll present an invoice at the end of every quarter, and everything that we spent in that quarter will get reimbursed to the county. So, yeah, for these first two years.
Where was it capped out at, 17?
$70,800 a year.
$800?
Yep, $70,800. For both years, it's $141,600.
This will end in December of '24, right?
Yep, at the very end of 2024. Now, we can still, and what we will do during 2024, is negotiate. I'm going to ask for a one-year, 100% extension. There's no promise of that. There's nothing like that. And if it's different, or if they'll say they'll do 90%, 80%, 70%, 50%, I'll take that to the council and give you an honest assessment of whether it's worth it. Like I said, this is a new program, really throughout the state, relatively newish, and it's certainly brand-new for us. So, we're interested to see how it goes.
Do you know how many other counties you're going to do it, or are they actively doing it?
I know there are a couple more still in the pipeline, and probably four to six are doing it now.
Yep.
Can you give us, maybe you have, and I apologize, can you give us a brief description of what this system navigator, what is its job and its intent?
Yeah. So, upon receipt of a new case, they will, and a new case being, a parent has been accused of not being able to take care of their children. They're either drugs in the home, or they're not parenting correctly. They're doing something wrong with their child and children. And so, a new case will be filed. The system navigator will now implement, input that information, what the accusations were, what the name and all the information for the case into a database. They will then listen to what the Department of Children's recommendation is on what sort of program that a parent should do, and then they will give us their opinion. So, if DCS, for example, if it's a drug case, and DCS would say something like they should take anger management classes, well, that may not make sense if it's drug addiction is the main problem or the problem. If there's no evidence of anger management issues, the system navigator may say to me, I don't think that's a proper program. If they're getting mean when they get drunk, maybe this other program would be more effective or something like that. So, it will be somebody who has more knowledge about those programs, more of a social worker than sort of the legal basis of what we do. And that's what we've become in these sort of cases as public defenders, is we have to spend more time sort of vetting these experts that do social work, you know, psychiatrists, psychologists, and figuring out what they do, rather than just making sure that the rules are followed legally. And so, we hope that this person can help explain to us what each program does, how they're doing it, and get those parents in the right programs. So, that's what we're hoping to do.
Does the county have any kind of committee, like where the public defender's office, the prosecutor's office, Child Protective Services, is there any kind of committee like that where you all kind of can join together and come up with these types of decisions?
Yeah, we have a number. We have a community corrections program. We have a number of groups, certainly on the criminal and defense side. There are fewer groups in the CHINs and the Child in Need of Services and DCS, the Department of Child Services. There are fewer of those programs ever. For each individual case, they have what's called a family team meeting, where all the people sort of get together and talk about that specific case. But overall, we don't. Now, I think Mark Berry is over our DCS office. I have a good relationship with him, I feel like. And we can all get together, you know, we can talk to the judges together. We can have those meetings. And we do that on a ad hoc basis, just as it comes, if we have something moving forward. But no, no formal system.
Well, I believe there is a community correction board that does need to talk about issues like this, would I be right?
Yeah, there is a community correction board that would never, yeah.
I personally feel like it's a great program. I think, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion that we approve.
I'll say it.
Okay, further discussion?
Just to be sure, no pennies out of county's pocket for two years.
For a few years. I thought I was going to reiterate, once I said before, after two years, if there's any kind of amount of money, we don't have the money.
That's right. We've made no, we made no, based on the discussions we had at the last meeting, we made no representations in Indianapolis that the Washington County would fund any other percent of it. And we capped it at two years. That allows me, that allows me some time to negotiate and then...
You capped it or the state capped it?
Well, we agreed.
You agreed?
Yeah, basically. There was certainly no agreement in any sort of step down from year three, four, five. So, two years. And it may not, it may not work for us. They may not get the data that they want. So, we were okay with that. Everybody was fine with that. Now, of course, in each quarter, we'll write the first check. You know, if I go buy a desk, I'll ask for that to be paid out of the county general so I can pay somebody that week. But it gets 100% reimbursed at the end of that quarter. So, if I pay something tomorrow, we do it, but it's 100%. There's nothing that'll be denied, up to $70,800, which we're going to keep, certainly within that budget.
Well, one thing I do want to, one thing I do want to bring up, I've had a chance to talk to some of the different offices and really feel, I think there's a little bit of uncertainty of how this would work with existing staff members that we are already paying, and then how that would actually help go through the justice process. So, I think I would like to see a little bit more conversation with, like, the prosecutor's office, community corrections, because we do have a community corrections program, probation. I would really like to see this go before that committee and get their recommendation, because with hiring somebody, I think it would be important to know how that's going to work within our existing system that we already have set up. So, personally, that's what I would like to see. Yes, Joe?
I feel, that was my thought exactly. It sounds, I'm not against the program, I can say that. But it sounds like the program could be a co-mangling of other programs that we've got. Now, if you can sit there and tell the council that, yep, that's a possibility, and that's going to free up some other sources where they could do other things. Okay, that's what I'm saying. We need a, if this is a co-mangling of programs, is it going to free up some other sources that can help with the whole problem? I just want to say this, the system navigator going to be working in a coercive situation that could free up other people and get into the jobs that they're doing, that they might have less to do?
Well, certainly, certainly I would hope so. I would hope that the program increases efficiency rather than, you know, adds that sort of workload. And I think that's probably what would happen. Now, primarily, the system navigator would be for the public defender's office. They wouldn't necessarily be the person who would speak in court. They wouldn't necessarily be the person that would make any sort of final decision on community corrections or something like that. So, because primarily, they're going to be doing the DCS program with a little bit of juvenile behind. If, for example, Melanie at the Community Corrections and Probation Department decide that this juvenile should be on a bracelet, meaning that they, they're restricted to their home, and it's a DCS bracelet, the system navigator would only probably tell me, you know, what arguments to make as far as, was this be appropriate for this child, or would something else be appropriate? It wouldn't be a situation where they would say, you know, to court or anything like that, that's what should be done or shouldn't. So, it's still going to be, the decisions are still going to be made between, you know, Melanie and I and the judge ultimately. So, this is mainly to take some work off of our attorneys and the staff. Now, we hope that we have somebody who is an expert. We hope that we hire somebody who gets along with everybody and can talk the same language, because sometimes, you know, we're talking in the legal language and they're talking in the sort of helping people language, into the social programs and the, that sort of social work language. And so, that's our hope. Our hope is that it makes it better. And I think we'll find somebody that does. But generally, it'll be for our office, and it's not, it's not anybody that we're going to send to the DCS for a while or getting in anybody's way, certainly. But that also means that they may not be able to take as much off anybody else's plate, but the public defender's office.
Since Judge Housen is here, does this seem, with your experience of being a prosecutor, does this seem like something that could go before the community corrections board? Does it make sense to see, to this position discussed there?
Yeah, well, the community corrections, there's two boards with the community corrections. There's the community corrections board, and then there's what's called the local J-RAC board, which is like Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. And the state created that last year, and we acted on that strategy to create a local J-RAC board. And this J-RAC board is for the purpose of streamlining and getting everybody on the same page with the local justice system. So, things like this are appropriate for that. So, I'm sure the board would be glad to have Mr. Bauer present there. Ultimately, funding decisions are the council job. You know, this board couldn't approve or disapprove if they could make a recommendation. But ultimately, you guys have weathered and have a fun thing.
Thank you. Any other further, any further discussion?
Well, she's been on the motion for the night. So, I'm curious, what was your suggestion?
The suggestion I have is that they go before the community corrections board, and that we seek a recommendation from the community corrections board.
And I will say, before I make any hiring decisions or a person, I'll absolutely meet with the judges and J-RAC and get their input on what type of person they think would be the right person. But I think generally, just because it's fully funded for two years, it is an internal public defender hire. I think we can make use of them. But also, I don't want to hire anybody that's going to certainly make anybody's job harder, and I don't think that's what's going to happen. I think it would be good, and I think J-RAC will support that. If we make a good hiring decision, I think we will.
I think, I think if there wanted to try this program, and it's fully funded, and looks like it may be a good program, you know, that's my decision, I believe.
I feel good about it. I think that no money being spent, you know, why wouldn't we maybe take the opportunity to see how it works?
Right.
All right, with that, I will call for a vote. All of us in favor, please raise your right hand.
All right.
It's okay, all of us. All right, motion carries.
Also, I have one more thing. And this is the opioid party. As you know, the State of Indiana engaged in a lawsuit with the medical opioid providers and received some funding for that. There are two separate funds that each subdivision, each political subdivision receives. And in the case of Washington County, there were significant funds, some of which go to the general fund, that can be spent in any way, and then some are only, can only be used for opioid remediation uses. And what we have proposed is a small amount of those remediation opioid use funds to go to a program that may help the system navigator, may help the public defender's office, but more importantly, help the parents for situations. We just had a situation last week where a parent had done everything else, right? This is another Child in Need of Services. They had gone to treatment. They had done well. They had submitted a number of negative drug screens and did not have the money yet to get into an apartment. And that was the only thing we were waiting on. We were waiting for them to raise the funds to be able to put down security deposits. And they waited an extra couple months, still continue to do well, and got that apartment. We would use these funds, among other things, to help those people get trips, to get car seats, to get security deposits down. And we think it'll be a good use of the remediation funds. It's a relatively small use, so it'll still be enough to use for law enforcement, anything else that anybody comes forward for any opioid program. And we hope to work with law enforcement in the future to come up with a program that works good for everyone. So, the city has already made a decision to give us $4,500. So, hopefully, that'll come in over the next year. And I ask that council do the same. And like I said, the only thing that these funds can be used for is opioid remediation, things that reduce the drug use in the county. And we have a program that we think does that, meets the required uses, and asks for $4,500. This year, Washington County, I think, is going to get $127,000-ish dollars, and we're asking for $4,500 of it.
Judge Housen, did you have something to ask?
Yeah, so, I came, as a prosecutor, a couple months ago, and I suggested that the opioid money be referred to the J-RAC committee, and you did that. So, I think it's appropriate that that goes to that committee. And I want to say about the public defender office and my good friend, Mr. Bauer, I hope he's not offended by it, but the public defender is not elected. The judges and prosecutor are elected. So, there's an inherent political constraint on the amount of money that the judges and the public defender and prosecutor spend. So, there's a political incentive to not go over your budget. In fact, there's a political incentive to cut your budget. But since the public defender is not elected, like many agencies, there's a political, there's an incentive to grow your agency and get, and claim more money in the system, which I think Mr. Bauer should do and attempt to do. I just ask the council, when you're making financial decisions, think of it as there's only so much money available for the justice system. And the more you give one agency, the less is available to other agencies. And the only agency that's going to come in and request more money without the constraint of political oversight on the budget is the public defender office. Not that they shouldn't get more money. I just think, I'm asking you to view the system holistically. I'm not faulting public defender officer Mr. Bauer for asking for that, but this is a good example of, this probably sounds like a great idea to you, but if you use that money there, it's not available for other things, and you have a curve from everybody else in the system, which is why the J-RAC board is a good place to vet these things, because it's made up of every member of the system, including, Rondell's on the board, you know, so the council member, the mayor's on the board. There's a bunch of people that are interested in the justice system that can vet this out. And if we can come to an agreement and bring it to you, great. If we can't, we may have to make decisions. But I would just encourage you on those systemic changes or funding for the justice system, to send it to that board first.
If I may. And I have no problem going to that board first and talking about the program there. I think it's a good program. I think I'll get approval there and be happy to come back next month. I have, we have enough funds, probably, in the meantime, with the city to do that. So, there's no rush. I can do that over the next month or so. But I will say, I disagree a little bit, as sometimes I do respectfully with Judge Housen. And that is, the public defender being not elected, I have seven bosses, right? I mean, that's the, the, there is, there is some political ability to the elected constitutional offices to hide amongst a group of voters. And that's not something I can do. I have to each month, and certainly each year, come to you and say, this is exactly where I spent the money. This is important. And I know each one of you are careful about how you spend your money. It is, how you spend the taxpayers' money. It is important to me, then, to come in at budget, under budget, every year, more important each year, because I have to answer to you each year and every month that you want, you want to bring here. Whereas the constitutional have four or six years between elections. And sometimes, unfortunately, their decisions cost us money. They choose to determine what cases get filed. They choose how these cases get resolved, whether they go to trial. And I'd be glad to bring each of you into the office and tell you exactly how things are going, how the sausage is being made. It's probably too granular to sit here and talk about in a public hearing. But the office as a group, I think, is cheaper than any other way that we could do it. I think it delivers better services, both to the judges and to the prosecutor. But, yeah, it has to, because I have to come here and I have to show some sort of use and value for money, whereas we don't, we don't have to do that quite as often with our elected officials. So, that's, but with that being said, I don't mind going around and going to other boards and asking for it. It is less than 5%, it's like 3.5% of just the opioid funds. It's a very small amount. And we can do a lot of good with that small amount. But like I said, there's no immediate issue on that.
I think, I think that would be helpful to go to the J-RAC board, have that conversation. And one thing I would request, too, I would imagine the rest of the council members would like this as well, for you to talk about the system navigator position. You know, it is approved, but I think it's critical that it works with the rest of
Agreed.
the arms of justice, of making sure that you're all on the same page, not duplicating, and perhaps utilizing each other's services, I think, would be very helpful. Joe, are you?
I'd just like to make a motion to table this decision until another next meeting.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Preston. All of us in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion taken.
Just to reiterate what Judge Housen was saying, I know several of the budgets haven't gone up. I have that conversation privately with you about the public defender board. And I understand their importance, with that budget has skyrocketed over the last few years.
And I agree. I think there are a number of things. I think Judge Housen will support me on this. We're going to start filing motions to reconsider the appointments of public defenders on cases where they posted high bonds. So, for example, over the next week, I've got a couple of clients who posted $10,000, right? They have given the county $10,000 to secure their freedom, and they still have a public defender. So, that may be perfectly appropriate in that case. But I'm going to start showing the judges, hey, you can either claw some of that money back at the end of the case, because they certainly are indigent, right? Or they have some ability to pay for those cases, or they no longer get the services. So, it's a free attorney. They go out into the marketplace and find who they want to find. And I think, once that changes, I think, my hope is that that gets our numbers a little lower where we need to be, and hopefully, there'll be some, you know, reductions in cost there and reductions in their. I don't hope it's going to be enough to make a difference. But we handle a number of cases, certainly not just the criminal cases. And so much depends on how many cases are filed in the CHIN system, in the juvenile system, and in criminal case. So, we're such a reactive program that I don't have as much control as I like about our budget. But I think we're doing better, and I think we're keeping a lot more things internal. We're building what we call walls around each other. We're building what we call walls around each other as attorneys. So if four people get arrested, we can keep that all in, we don't talk about those cases. So I think that's.
We certainly appreciate that. And it's been painful for how much money we've been spending in the public defender's office. It's been painful. And we have seen a decrease within the proper fees because of those just institutional changes that you guys have made at House. I think that's made a big difference. But yes, certainly anything you can do to look to cut your budget. We're in a really difficult position. We really chose, we prioritized raising salaries last year, giving a raise to everybody during budget. And you know, that puts us in a really challenging position when we want to look to using discretionary money, which we really don't have much of. So I think that's something to keep in mind. Really, we're asking all departments to be very intentional with their funds, look for ways to cut. So whatever internal changes you can make to stay on that path, we greatly appreciate it.
We'll hold the law to our best.
All right, thank you.
Thank you three times.
All right, Judge Housen?
Thank you, thank you for making time for me. I won't take up much of your time. And I want you to know I'm trying, I'm not asking for anything. I've been in office about a month in the Superior Court. And I just wanted to come in and give you kind of a snapshot of what I see, where I think particularly the budget issues are going, which I know the council's most interested in, and something I'm trying to do to manage the funds. So first thing we did was move out all the paper. The office was full of paper files, which my office, the private prosecutor, was paperless 10 years ago. Clerk's office is paperless. So I wanted to bring the Superior Court into the paperless world. So we started that process. The clerk already had money budgeted for digitization of files. So that's not going to cost anything extra to you guys. So we have shipped all the paper files off to a company that's digitizing everything. And they'll be stored offsite, not in file cabinets, not taking up space and money. And then also, we're not using, we're not creating paper nearly to the same degree. So that'll save cost and office supplies and ink and copiers and all that. So that's the first thing we did, which then moved out all the filing cabinets, which created a lot of space in the Superior Court. So you're all welcome to come by and visit, we'd love to show you around. But there's a lot of new room there now. We've moved the furniture around some to make better use of the space. But there's some empty spaces that I'd like to make usable eventually. I'm not trying to do that now, but ultimately, it would be best that that space is not just empty, but it's utilized for meeting space or attorney meeting space, something like that. So that's kind of a long-term plan. There's a lot of certified mail being sent. And I've eliminated certified mail except on things that are required to be sent by certified mail. So we are sending either first-class mail notices or email or text messages notices. So digital or regular mail versus certified mail. Certified, as you know, costs $10 a letter to send. We eliminated a lot of that. All that comes out of clerk's budget. So I think what you're going to see with us moving to digital notice and first-class mail notice is that the clerk's mail posted budget should go down considerably, potentially tens of thousands of dollars in mail costs, I think, over the course of the year. So I'd encourage you to talk to the clerk about that, look at that. She has taken the baseline of what we spent on mail last year. And we're going to, as the year proceeds, kind of check back in with me every few months to see where the mail ledger is. So I think, I think we should see the mail ledger dropping for the clerk. So I'm hopeful about that. I eliminated books, we were purchasing law books. Judge Midlock likes books, Judge Newkirk liked books. I went to law school recently enough that we don't use books anymore. They're very expensive. So with me at least, Judge Midlock's keeping his books. With me at least, we eliminated law books. It's all digital. The state provides digital research to us at No Cost. So I signed up for that. So I eliminated entirely our research fees, aside from a book or two that we need for other people to use or that I'll need on the bench. But basically, those research costs are going to go from several thousand dollars to probably less than a thousand dollars. So I look forward to that. I think most of you know I eliminated the office manager position. There were four positions. You guys had created a fourth position. I just am operating on the three staff currently. None of them is an office manager. I'm not going to ever have an office manager. There are only three people. We don't need an office manager when there are only three people. I'm an office manager. So I don't know now if three is functional, but we've done just fine so far the first month. I'm going to keep monitoring that. Hopefully, I don't have to replace that position. If I do, it won't be at the same level of pay. It'll be a corporate court pay, not an office manager pay. So we'll save a few thousand dollars there. In the worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, I can operate on three and we save $70,000. So we'll see how that goes. I've also talked to Judge Midlock about maybe sharing a person between the two courts if we, because he has an open position as well. We'll keep having those conversations, but hopefully, we don't need, I don't need four people. So I say all that to say, I'm looking closely at budget, I'm trying to save money. I think you recall from my time as prosecutor, I keep a really tight grip on the budget. I'm going to monitor this throughout the year. I'll probably come back at the end of the year, you know, maybe October or something, and let you know if the predictions I make are panning out. Hopefully, they will. And then as we go into the '24 budget, you know, I hope to make things look different. But we'll, we'll see how they progress. And then if there are savings, if there are substantial savings, I may request to use some of those savings to make the space more functional, to buy some furniture or something, to make the space usable for meeting space or something like that, just so it's not wasted space for us. So that's all I have. Glad to answer questions that you might have about anything. And I thank you for your time.
I would like to have a harder number on the legal books that you're going through.
Yep.
Maybe encourage or talk to.
I think the budget was $7,000 for research.
Every year?
Every year, yeah. And I think it'll be less than $1,000 getting rid of the books. And with, the Supreme Court provides digital research for free. So I signed up for that. They didn't tell us that for some reason, after the new judge training. I just learned from a different judge. So I got that going. We had, I had entered a different contract with West, who provides the legal books. Immediately was able to get rid of the books. I entered a contract with West Law for digital only, which was probably half of what the books cost. And then I found out about this free research from the Supreme Court. So I'm in the process of canceling the West contract entirely. So that's not completely done. They may charge me a cancellation fee or something, but that'll still be working.
You would think the state would do whatever job that don't provide the new judges.
You would think so. There's lots of things there. That's a whole other conversation.
That's fitting.
Yeah.
Stephanie?
I think everybody would be surprised when it comes down to postage. I mean, because the postage, the actual metered postage runs out of the commissioner's budget, but all the material for all the confirmed delivery runs out of my budget. And it was astonishing the amount of mail that was going out prior to January 1st. We can run reports, even monthly reports, to see the savings compared to last year. And postage went up, you know, so the confirmed delivery, time you print it all out, have all the material to make the confirmed delivery, it was running about $10 a piece. And then a duplicate piece of mail was being sent out first class. So everybody, no matter what their salary is, or if they have a job, no job, everybody has a cell phone. So it was an excellent idea to go to email and text messaging.
I disagree that everybody has a cell phone and everybody does email and text messaging.
Well, maybe I taught it.
There's a significant portion of the population in this county that can't text. And there's a bigger proportion of the population in this county that doesn't have emails, so.
But I've been asking every person that comes in front of me, do their email and their phone. And it's probably 90% have, they text the drug dealers, just fine, John.
We appreciate what you're doing. Yes, I appreciate that.
Well, I do want to thank the clerks. Stephanie and her staff have been amazing in helping with the paper and the boxes. Tony and Buford, before you got sick, have been great by helping us move furniture. You know, the furniture company that worked in the building, I guess, initially, one of the charges thousands of dollars to move the desks. And Tony and Buford and Aaron Davis from Circuit Court came over and did it at No Cost. So I'm really leaning heavily on other agencies to not have to spend this money. But we're very lucky that everybody works all together. So if you have a good group.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Yes, thank you. Being so frugal with the council money, we appreciate you.
We always has been.
Yes.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, health department?
Good morning.
Morning.
I have some handouts for you guys, or take a clip. And there will be pictures. I don't know if you guys have heard anything about the Governor's Public Health Commission? Share with us, please. Okay. So the state has been saying, they've been notifying the commissioners and the council. So that kind of makes me aware that you guys don't know anything of what they're talking about. The Governor's Public Health Commission was formed in August of '21. The governor found out that public health is not the greatest in Indiana as a nation. We're ranked 45th in public health funding. So he said every future deserves access to public health services. So what this funding, counsel? What this funding will come from is our local health maintenance. And we have a trust account as well. So they're going to be repealing the trust account that we have and putting that money into the local health maintenance. The local health maintenance fund hasn't been changed in 30 years, the formula for that funding. So they said this funding is to be designed as a continuous funding source. So they said it's supposed to be stable, reoccurring, and excessive funding for us. Your handouts show on the four public health services. There's one that says the current state of Indiana. And if you flip that, you'll see where it says the smoking and tobacco use in Indiana were ranked 45th in the nation, and they're trying to decrease that. Obesity, we're really high on, we're 46th. Mental health, we're 43rd. Child obesity and immunizations, we're 41st. And again, public health funding, we're 45th in the nation. So they're trying to decrease our numbers to where we used to be. They created a, I printed only one off because it is kind of thick. But this is a governor's, like, commission rule that they're going to be presenting to legislation in May. So if you guys want this, you can have it and read through it. But one point in there showed that in 1991, we were ranked 26th in the nation for public health. And again, now we're up in the 40s. So it's drastically changed. But with that funding being said, the council, what they're saying, I don't think it's on the four public health services one. They're saying if our county opts into the money, again, we already have this local health maintenance money. It's just going to be increased substantially. Right now, we only get $33,000 a year for this funding. And that goes towards like our public health nurse, our department nurse. And she's a part-time educator, she pays her salary. We provide hand sanitizer units for the counties to use for fair, anything like that. Again, flu-free flu vaccines. That's at no cost for the county employees. And headlight shampoo. We, educational materials, software maintenance, that we do birth and death records on. What they're doing is increasing it. So if our county opts into it, we would potentially, they haven't gotten to a defined number yet. They're not telling me, but it could be up to a million dollars instead of $33,000. We will be providing more public health services. One thing they're saying on the four public health services is an emergency preparedness employee. We have to have either a part-time or a full-time employee. Currently, I guess that we do not have that. There's talking about life case manager. They've already changed how that works. So if a child less than seven years of age has free testing, but they're wanting a life case manager, a risk assessment person, a school health nurse liaison, they're pushing really towards that. So we could have our health educator in our schools, as long as our schools are good with it, go in there, talk about self-disability training, first aid stuff, and that does with public health. But if our county decides not to opt into it year one, we, you guys have the ability to opt into year two. If we don't opt in year two, then we have to sit out for five years. And if we're looking at a million dollars, we could be sitting, we're losing out on at least $4.5 million. The year 2024, we will only be receiving half a million, around that number. They, like I said, we don't have a definitive. In year 2025, we will receive the full million dollars. They say our county will be required to put in 20% of that. We already do that, the state says. Every county, except for four in Indiana, don't need that. And that comes through tax funds. So as long as we keep, they say, our health department fund kind of status quo where we're at, I can decrease a little bit here and there. For, we have a part-time employee that's $10,000, and I know we won't be using that. If we have this $1 million, I'll be able to provide full-time out of that. Again, this is not passing the legislation yet, so this is not a set in stone. This is just for you to be aware of what the state is doing. But like I said, they're going to repeal a local trust that we have and put it as a local health maintenance fund. The trust, we get $18,000 a year. And local health maintenance, we get $33,000. So that'll be a big jump for us. I do want to point out on the agenda today, it says this was a grant. This is actually not grant funding, this is just what we have. So we don't lie for it. I just have to tell the state what we're allocating the money for.
Okay, so I'm looking at some of these numbers. So basically, the least amount that we would get would be $450,000.
Correct.
Based on this, and that's on the second page of the packet.
And I will also tell you, we give it more funding because our county is ranked, well, our county for death-wise, we're 2% to 4%. We have more people passing on our county than any other county really around us. So we get more funding for that. And I can tell you that last year, we were 31 more people higher in passing than we've ever been. We were at 280. And in year 2021, we were at 249. So it does kind of show where we're at. So we will be getting a little bit more money from that.
So just like at the base number, making that calculation, the 20% was $90,000. So are you saying that they will count whatever money we locally put into the health department?
Yes.
And what's our, do you know what our total budget is for health department?
We're, this year is 400, I have that number, it's like $450,000.
Is what we are locally contributing to.
What you're level already.
So there's no additional funds that we need to put towards the health department?
Keep it where it is. Yeah, keep it where it is. I can decrease a little bit here and there. Because we're looking at maybe a vector control person that does mosquito spraying. And we are going to put money towards that in the health department. I might be able to move that into the maintenance. So I can move things around a little bit here and there.
Do we, as a county, have like a strategic plan for the health department or health needs of the county? At one time, St. Vincent used to do a community health assessment, you know. Or is there something that we have that, for example, you have maybe five or six priorities, things that you want to focus on?
that you want to focus on? I would imagine having this much of an increase in funding, it will be critical rather than being reactive to saying, oh, well, somebody asked us for this, so we'll put money towards that. For you to really have an intentional strategy of what's going to make the biggest impact and a good thing for our buck.
So I've been dealing with somebody from the state, and she kind of sent me a link to where we work in Washington County on different stuff, so we can kind of focus more on those priorities. They say we don't have to do this all in year one, we can move it, but they kind of wanted to see growth. So wherever we see work, we can potentially make big impact. I can tell you, we've started a list in the health department, it's not like 100% set in stone. And if you guys have ideas, that would be helpful. We can also partner with different entities, I'd say. One would be, if we partnered, is to reach out to Life Springs, because mental health in Indiana is pretty high, and we could work with them, we can work with their, if they have a nurse practitioner, anything like that along that lines. Even our county clinic, if we could offer another nurse practitioner where we can refer to, we would pay for it out of that fund, is what I'm being told.
Okay.
Again, if they offer more full-time employees, we can pay salary, we can pay their social security, longevity, perf, anything along that line, out of that funding, it wouldn't come through county funds.
And just to have a good assessment of where you're at, within your space needs right now, are you at, do you have adequate space now?
They say we can rent out of that money, the million dollars say that they would give us. With 10% of that can go towards land, building, or vehicles. Granted, 10% is not going to go very wrong place, so if we have a million dollars one year, and we only spend half of it, that half a million would revert back into our funds. And the way I understand it, if we just keep billing on that, we can use as a carryover fund, and then that 10% would be used as a carryover. So we could build that fund to be able to move, or we can rent out additional space?
I would just say probably the sentiment of the council is like, let's stay where we're at in every department and not grow where we have to find a new building. So like, this additional money should be great, also be considerate of staff, because I think we're really in a position where we're not looking to grow the footprint of county government.
The, would you guys have any suggestions on where to put more people? Because we have no ideas in our health department.
But I think we would have to talk about how to be strategic with using existing spaces, so that, I would think it would be more impactful to use those dollars towards programming and things like that than putting it towards a building or something.
And I agree. I think it will be a headache to kind of do it that way and just, like you said, programs, but that is an option that they say we can do.
Helpful, that's good. Any other questions from the council? Uh, do you have to have a decision made by?
So they, it won't go into legislation until May, and that is still up in the air, if they will pass it, not pass it. They've really been pushing this out of state, and this is state funding. If it does pass, then I will be able to get our budget kind of planned together, and they say if we have a million in year 2024, it'll be half a million, so I'll kind of just budget about half a million and bring it towards you guys. I may not know 100% set in stone what my fund is, so it might go a little bit, it'll probably go down a little bit here and there. So I will present it in July. They say really, you guys, I don't know if it's 100%, you guys really don't have to make a decision until November, is the way I understand it.
Well, we appreciate you coming in ahead of time, so we have time to think about it and find out more information.
Yeah, if you guys, like I said, have any suggestions on what to do, that would be helpful, because we kind of have ideas, it's just where to focus it more towards. Great. It's a good.
You've got a chart of vital statistics.
And these are from the state themselves, so.
So if they, if a Washington County resident gives birth in Clark County, is that Washington County birth or Clark County?
So I can tell you, if they're, they're a Washington County resident, and they're born out of the county, that is that county's birth. I mean, like, for birth records, when we issue them, we can only issue them if they're born in Washington County. Last year alone, we only had 28 babies born in Washington County, and that's almost because of our hospital, home birth centers.
That's one of those, that's one of those.
Yeah, our birth is really low. Again, like the lady I talked to with the state though, said our teen pregnancy rate is very high for Washington County, but again, there'll be more out of the county because of our hospital.
Same with the death rate? The county's counted here?
Yeah. So we, we have more people that die out of the county than would do in the county, so our numbers don't, when I say we had 280 people pass in our county, that's not true.
So does this mean, so what does that mean? That's the people that died at this county?
Yeah, this is true.
That's what you gave with the number of accidents?
Just passed away at their home, hospital, anything like that. But then we have more people that die out of the county. Like, they live in Washington County, but they go to Clark County now. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Like I said, you have more questions? I'm learning about this like every day, so I keep going on and on, running out of stuff, so.
Well, sounds good, so.
Yeah, it'll be a benefit to the community if we can get the funding.
As you said, he would support it, sign it.
He, he's the one that's pushing it.
He's the one that's pushing it.
Yeah, so I, if he's pushing for it, he's going to sign it, as long as legislation will, except for the.
And they can confirm and correct it.
Yeah. Wonderful. And we're just like a small portion, because it's based on population, so that funding, every county has more money. So like the first year, I think the state's looking at $110 million invested in public health, and then it'll be about $220 million in employment by, if every county. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to see some of that if we could go to that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think there are a couple of council members who'd be interested in sitting down with you and talking about some needs and being strategic.
I've already talked to her a little bit, I'd like to just get some other members involved.
Yeah. Yeah, we can sit down and just, because that's a lot of money, a million, because our budget's not even half a million for the whole department, so if you would kind of have a $1.5 million budget, and then I come to kind of plan, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that helps us think in the future too, how to plan, be strategic.
Yeah. All right, thank you. You're welcome. Okay. All right, commissioners. Next on the agenda.
So yes, very few things you can do about time. Time, as it's told, takes its toll on many things. Takes its toll on buildings, for one thing. Now, fortunately, when this building was built, the, the, the way things were done then, probably did a little bit better job. We have some problems at the highway department facility, and those of you who've been involved in county government know that this, this didn't just happen overnight. There are mainly four things. The number one thing is, we've outgrown the highway department facility. You know, 40 years ago, when I was, I was actually working there, we had single axle trucks, we had one backhoe, there were, I think, six graders, but most of them stayed out in the county. And we just had one brush cutter. We didn't have excavators, we didn't have tandem axle trucks. And basically, we have outgrown that facility. That in itself, that's number one. Now, you can prioritize these four any way you want, if they all, in my opinion, have equal weight. The second thing is, with the situation with all the growth, with Walmart and the third, fourth, five restaurants out there and other businesses, the traffic situation, when, when our county highway trucks come out of Anson Street, heading south toward the intersection, most of the time, when they want to pull out there on the highway, that's when the highest traffic volume is taking place. Now, once again, a tandem axle truck with a snowplow in front of it, if it's the winter time, sticking out there about 10 feet and trying to make those corners, I hate to say this, but it's, it's just a matter of time before probably there's an accident. Now, hopefully that'll never happen, but when you think of accidents, the first thing I think about in relation to the county is, is exposure and lawsuits. The third thing, the main office building up there has some issues due to, you know, we're blessed in this part of the country with karst and wet weather springs and this clay, rocky clay ground. We've got some drainage problems in the office building. I think there's some pictures being passed around. You know, we, we actually, here a few weeks ago, when we had this rain, we had some water coming up right in the middle of the concrete. And now you can walk in there, and it looks nice, we, they've done a lot to fix it up, you know, painted the floor, looks, looks really good, but, well, it's lipstick on a pig, so to speak. That building is, is approaching, I think it's 70 years old. It, it's just not in good shape. The fourth, and probably in my opinion, the most critical thing is, our friends at the state, hi them, they, of course, they have a job to do, but we've got fuel tanks out there that are right at, just a little over 30 years old. And because of federal and state laws, actually, no one wants to see fuel leaking into our groundwater. So they have a policy where they strongly suggest, in fact, they will mandate, just a matter of time, that we replace these fuel tanks. Two, one at 10,000, one at eight, or?
Both 10.
Both 10, okay, 10,000. One diesel, one gas, obviously, but anyway, they, they have told us the past year, year and a half, as they inspect, hey, guys, you need to get those tanks replaced. We did go ahead and purchase the tanks last year, and I think they will be delivered in April or May. So the question is, I'm asking myself, now, this is not my call, not my decision, but if it were, and if I, if I had the means, if I had the money, if this were your facility, and you know these situations, you know the issues that we have, and I might say that if you doubt anything I've said, please feel free, any of you, to go visit Superintendent Boils and talk to him about these things. Don't just take my word for it. What I would do if it were mine, I would be thinking strongly about finding a different location with more room and better access, so the guys could get in, get out with the trucks. And I certainly wouldn't spend $400,000 and put two new fuel tanks in at a location that I know is outdated and too small and needs a lot of work. So we've passed some pictures around to kind of show you the inside of the building and also the, well, overcrowding, I guess you could say. So naturally, we have a lot of work to do on our end as commissioners to, to come up with a, a plan. We've been, we've been talking around about a location. We think we might have access to one that would be favorable, a good location. And basically, today, I just wanted to inform you, if you didn't know, if you, if you don't get out there and talk to Rick on a regular basis, which I once again encourage you to do so, just wanted to let you know what was coming down the pipe. The three of us have always tried to be proactive, and we try not to kid ourselves or give ourselves false hope into thinking that we've got something, and we got a facility that, you know, it's outlived its usefulness. Now, some might say, well, you know, is, is now, is this the right time to do it? Well, I don't know if there is a good time. The only thing that, that is time sensitive is the tanks. Do you want to spend the $400,000, which we already have the tanks paid for?
Is that the cost of installation?
That's total, yeah. So do you want to put these new tanks in an outdated facility? This is, this is the main thing, in addition to the water problems inside the office building, in addition to the traffic issue, in, in addition to the overcrowd, which, which we have. Just drive around up there, you'll see. Our intentions are, just roughly speaking, that we can probably come up with a third or half of the total amount of this project, as if you want to call it a somewhat down payment or whatever. Now, there are lots of ways this could be done, it's been discussed just briefly, we're trying to talk with other communities, I know they do this a lot down Charleston, so it's, it's basically a lease purchase type thing.
Actually, about a VOT?
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, operate transfer?
Yeah, so anyway, we're, we're just here to start looking into that, but I want to point one thing out. I've got some handouts here. So what you're going to be looking at there, I want you people to understand, and I think, I think a lot of you on the council do, but I want to reemphasize this, the three of us, and I'll have to credit our fellow commissioner, Phil, who's obviously not here, but, but Phil has helped us a lot in kind of thinking outside the box, in the monies that we do have, you know, we got X, we have X amount of dollars that we're not using for payroll, you know, there's money coming in, money going out. But at any given time, over the course of the year or month, we have X number of funds in the bank. Now, I would also like to say that, that our, our new bank, since we, we put all these monies together, and we went with one bank instead of having money scattered everywhere, our interest on that money has helped the county tremendously. And with interest rates going up, I think it was two years ago, back when they had hit rock bottom, Phil said, well, why don't we refinance our jail bond? We did that, got with the ice miller, Lisa Lee, and it, you know, it costs a couple thousand dollars to pay her, but we ended up, as you'll see, saving about $350,000 on that bond. We are continuously thinking of ways, believe it or not, to save the county money, and not only save the county money, but make the county money. Now, in addition to that, we've just recently had our board of finance meeting, and, and we were pleased to find out that we earned a little over $350,000 worth of earned interest in 2022, because we took some excess funds there and that we weren't using at that time and invested them. So, like I said, we are always trying to do this. Now, that's not to say... Now, that's not to say that we are loaded with money. We still, and you still, have to remain vigilant. And I want to thank the ladies in the auditor's office for continuously reminding us about this and about that and keeping us on the ball and holding us to task, task, because they do a good job. So, that being said, uh, we will be getting back with you, uh, at next month's meeting and, uh, we'll try to have some more information as to what this animal might look like. Um, I'll just go ahead and tell you right now, so no one goes into sticker shop. And this is just a really, really rough estimate, but you're, you're probably looking at somewhere between four and five million dollars. That's total, you know, that's buildings, office, property, entrance, uh, the whole, the whole ball of wax.
Is that number calculated from somebody local?
No, that's just, that's just based on our numbers for square footage for an office building. It's got a fixed cost, about what was ninety-five dollars a square foot. And then you've got, uh, square footage numbers on a, uh, a shop, uh, and then.
Every land rises.
Yeah, yeah. But we, we've got a lot of homework to do too.
I see a lot of pricing ver- ver- um, pricing variety depending on who's responding to it. So that's why I ask, somebody local, I think it's likely going to be more affordable.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any questions from the council?
Does anyone have any?
Rick, would you like to add anything to that?
Uh, Todd covered it very well. I have a few pictures here. Anytime somebody brings up, you know, there's an issue, my mind automatically goes, have you tried this? Have you tried this? So I made a list of things we had done and tried to remedy with water issue and the, and the basement's the office. The shop gets some water, but that's pretty harmless. The office is where the damage occurs. And over the years, this is something we fought with for fifteen years. Here's some pictures of it, of the adjustments we've made. I made a list of things we've tried to remedy. I think what it comes down to, the building is just settled lower than the ground around it. So it's sort of like putting a building in the middle of a pond, you're never going to keep the water out.
Anything else, council? Commissioners? Okay, commissioners?
I might add one other thing, and I, I'm not at liberty to say who, but we do have a prospective buyer for that property. If we can make this work, we won't want to keep it, we won't need it. Um, we had an appraisal done back, um, a year and a half ago. I believe it was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
All right, thank you.
Does that discount remediation cost for petrol and oil?
Well, we're, we're going to have to remove the tanks. We, we can't leave the tanks there.
Right.
Either way. You talk about the remediation, does, does it come into effect?
It looks like contaminated dirt and, yeah, yeah. I mean, I thought that might be the factor, the way you mentioned your cost to replacing the tanks, but.
I, I thought it was, I thought the.
Rick, is it showing you?
It shouldn't, we checked it, the tank removal was included with the installation of the new tanks. Because we're, the county is the owners of those tanks, so we can't just walk away. We're responsible for them whether we're there or not.
Anything else? All right. Kyra?
I have a salary requirement for having a position in Longwood. It's Sandy Backler, she goes on to be assistant coordinator and manager of dispatch. So this is not really a big question.
Council, any questions about that? Did you hear Kyra? You want me to repeat that? Uh, the physician that, um, who holds that position, Kyra?
Sandy Backler.
Sandy Backler holds the physician and has been assistant coordinator, and that position is now going to be a regular dispatcher. So wanting to move monies from assistant coordinator to dispatcher, and the salary is thirty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Any questions with that? It's just moving, moving the money. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
Motion from Preston, do I have a second? Second from Bubba, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay. All right, with that, anyone in the audience, Emily, Stephanie? You may have any questions? Okay, all right, we'll go to council members.
I thought we were funny.
Oh, okay.
Didn't want to be done last year, pardon the five of them.
Do we need to do that each year?
Yeah, it's not be done each year.
Okay. Okay, what kind of motion do you need, Kyra?
I'm just saying a motion to, 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 to commissioners.
Okay, so this is in reference to the A R P money. And last year, we had, um, allocated the money to go to the commissioners for them to use it how they see fit through the recommendation of the A R P committee. Kyra was saying that needs to be done each year. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to, um, allow those monies to be used by the commissioners.
So many motions.
Okay, I've got Joe. All right, Joe, okay, Joe on the motion and Rondell second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, anything else? Okay. All right, with that, Bubba, do you have any updates, anything you'd like to share?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Gerald?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, Joe?
All right.
Preston?
The only thing I'll add is the last, um, redevelopment commission meeting, the redevelopment commission did vote to move forward with the airport funding for the Ready Project to provide the match for that. So, um, we should see, you know, work on the airport being done shortly, which is kind of exciting. So there is some infrastructure investment going on out at the airport. And commissioners, do you have anything? Any party words?
May I?
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you all for your time with that. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
That'll do.
Okay, I've got motion from Preston.
Awesome.
Okay, well, I'll take a second from Gerald. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Need a adjourn.